Continue.
Hey, good to go, good to go.
All right, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals, Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, and we are back, and we'll start with continuances or withdrawals. Counselor?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, thanks for the opportunity, good afternoon, board. Off the record, Louis Graham Hollis, there at all. We will Jackson had. Doctor Luggins, councilor at the circle. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have before you five different matters. If you wish for me to read into the record each individual matter. With a full description or just the uh?
No, ju- so I've got one seventy-three twenty-four S, one seventy-four twenty-four S, one seventy-five twenty-four Z, two sixty-six twenty-four S, and two sixty-seven twenty-four S, correct?
Yes, correct, Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we respectfully ask for a continuance.
Okay, all right, so this one, you know, you start to see the same names over and over again on the continuances, and this one has been here quite some time, so this is gonna be the last continuance. Um, so I hope that you are ready to go the next time. Um, this is gonna be, these matters, one seventy-three twenty-four S, one seventy-four twenty-four S, one seventy-five twenty-four Z, two sixty-six twenty-four S, and two sixty-seven twenty-four S will be continued to January seventeen, twenty-twenty-five. The two P M. Call, no further notice, will be given, and it is a final extension.
Mr. Chairman, I say this for record.
Sure.
You allow some little discretion. Mr. Chairman, we're dealing with five different applications that have to just tell you immediately left any more further detail. This particular uh project, we deal with re- living now for box.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha. All right.
That's true.
Continue.
We're dealing with three distinct non-for-profits who was in watch to position to do something that's very important to the West Side. I don't have to um delay the point in terms of this. Purpose of the project is basically in terms of rehabilitation, term of drugs, so forth and so on, restorative, so forth and so on. This project is critical uh to twenty-eight four, as well as the West Side, more than twenty-eight four will be servicing by this, by this institution, and it took a master in undertaking. We had to make some changes due in cities here, due to some requests by the city of Chicago. It took us a while to get a fee. We basically got fee approximately like two weeks ago, do no fault of our own, the separate attorneys working on that. It was just a lot of moving parts and things. And I certainly hope because of the nature of this important project, that that taken in consideration because not to labor, it definitely need.
When was this application filed?
We started so uh working with Sony uh on November twenty-two twenty-two.
Okay. Well, the application's only good for a year, though. So.
That what you were filed in February. I think that's when it's filed, February twenty-four.
Okay. Well, so, so even if, so, so one seventy-three, one seventy-four, and one seventy-five were filed in February of twenty-four, you only have until February. Am I right about that? Yeah, you've got until February of twenty-five, otherwise you're out of time. So do you want me to continue to February?
Yes, please.
He shook his head no, but he said yes, please, it's.
I believe we'll be ready in January, Chair.
But we see a chairman. I was saying, bonus caution, because I hear you learn with the state on the record. I would say let's go to February, just to make sure.
Okay. Okay, all right, so uh. I'll, 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 I'll read this out, so, all right, so we're gonna clarify that my, my prior continuance that I stated earlier, uh, just a few minutes ago, is stricken. Uh, calendar numbers, one seventy-three twenty-four S, one seventy-four twenty-four S, one seventy-five twenty-four Z, two sixty-six twenty-four S, and two sixty-seven twenty-four S will be continued to February twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five, the two P M. Call.
Thank you.
And I do believe you are required to provide notice for that. Yeah, yeah, and let's get that um. Let's get it on the new forms, uh, because we've got new forms now, uh, the, the, the forms became effective no- uh, November one. Um, so let's, let's get the new forms uh submitted, and um, which are much easier for all of us to digest the material, and um, we will hear you uh on the two P M. Call February twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a clarification, do they need to really um send out all the notifications?
I do believe you're required to send out the notices again. Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Lawyers are shaking their heads yes, so.
All brand applications, so we would have to submit new any submitted little uh, so notice, starting property owners have to republish it in the newspaper.
Okay.
So yeah, everything would have to be redone again on them, of course.
Okay.
Understood.
Okay, great.
Welcome, we can, Chairman, you two both.
All right, any other uh continuances or withdrawals?
Withdrawals? Uh, yeah, Chairman, um, number three eight twenty-four Z on page ten.
Mm-hmm.
Um. This was one zoning lot that was illegally subdivided. One twelve oh six was purchased by Sergio and Lucia Pavella, and the house was subsequently sold to somebody else. The new property owner has not provided authorization for this application to be filed, so it has to be dismissed.
Okay, all right, so calendar number uh three eighty-eight twenty-four Z is dismissed on the board's own motion pursuant to section four point one of the rules of procedure. All right, let's uh call the first case.
Um, very bottom.
Oh, uh, y- y- yeah, do we have um? Oh, we didn't say. Yeah, he's not here yet. Okay, all right, so I think we can, the alderman isn't here yet, so.
No, so we'll go slightly out of order, case three sixty-eight twenty-four Z, three sixty-nine twenty-four Z, nineteen thirty-six, our subject.
Hey, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, uh, counselor, if you'd like to uh provide a brief overview and then introduce your witnesses.
Thank you very much, um. This is uh Dina and Travis Meyer. Um, they're a young couple with a young family who have decided to plant their flag here in Chicago. They bought this classic, uh, beautiful old nineteenth-century building. Uh, but it has, and their plan is to restore and renovate it into a uh full family uh home, and they hope to uh spend many years and raise their family there. It uh for many years was uh, over the last century, was uh various shapes of a multi-family, and uh the back little addition is made of wood and is kind of falling apart. There is a legal um coach house, uh, and uh these plans would make it all one house, and uh they'd help to be able to have their parents, who are, both sets of parents are from out of town and uh getting older. They would stay there when they visit, and also maybe eventually, uh, one of, one or one side or the other would end up living there.
Yeah.
Um, we've been through an elaborate uh community process, um. The uh Lincoln Central Association uh generally uh would not approve uh attaching the coach house into the house, uh, but uh, they were very impressed that this is just outside the mid-north um uh landmark district, and they were very impressed that this family is willing to restore this nineteenth-century house, and they wanted to reward that, and so they gave us a full letter of support. Um, and then the alderman uh has also given us a full letter of support. Uh, there was also a neighbor, a immediate neighbor who was concerned, and we worked out a memorandum of understanding, but then they're more concerned with construction issues. And uh so we're aware of nobody who's against this, and everybody's for it, and uh we have Dina and Travis with us, and we have our architect, um, Mike Ryan, who has uh worked with everybody to get this in a position that could be best.
Okay, um. The applicant's witnesses, uh, are the materials that were submitted in support of this application still true and correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, those materials will be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
Actually. Uh, the, the question I have really has to do with drainage on the property, um, and I it may be moved because you, you have, it looks like, I just wanna be clear, that there was paving, and there's existing paving there, there's not any grass. So what you're doing doesn't affect how the water drains, but where does it drain from just outside onto the side, side, side lot of the property?
It's tying into the city sewer.
So Mike Brian is the architect.
Outside, so it goes into the city sewer out to the?
There's an underground plumbing to connect the downspouts.
Any other questions, any more? Take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next two cases, two seventy-eight twenty-four S and two seventy, two seventy-seven twenty-four S, two twenty, two seventy-eight twenty-four Z. One twenty-seven oh one, you know, seven south. The old Tommy budget.
Okay.
From his office.
Okay.
So there actually been written objections. Number C, I mean.
Okay.
Till December.
Well, yeah.
Okay, uh, oh, perfect. Everyone who's planning to testify in this case, have you signed to this sheet? Okay, great. Um. All right, uh, everyone planning to testify, uh, will you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do, okay.
Thank you very much. Um. I have a recommendation from the Department of Planning and Development for counter number two seventy-seven twenty-four S. Uh, just for the record, they are recommending denial of the proposed gas station. Um, we do have some uh opposition to this case, um. For those of you who may not know how this proceeds, this is, this is just the procedure of how it's gonna go. Um. Uh, the applicant will make a brief opening statement, providing an overview of their application. Then the opposition, uh, the interested parties can make a brief statement summarizing uh their opposition. Uh, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant's witnesses, and the applicant may ask questions of you as well. Um, will then open the floor for any non-party comment, where members of the public may make brief statements in support of or in opposition to uh the application. And then finally, the applicant will get the final word uh to, to rebut and, and close out the uh, the application. And throughout all of this time, uh, the board members here can ask questions of anyone. Um, so with that, uh, Counsel Patikus, if you could provide a, a brief overview of the application and introduce your witnesses.
Uh, I will, before I do that, uh, briefly, Chairman, uh, my understanding is under the new rules specifically six, seven, six point seven point three and six point seven point three one, as an interested party. Um, as far as my office is aware, there was no submittal or registration by any of the uh, objectors that are present today, so I just wanna, again, it's brand-new procedure, so bear with me. I just wanna make sure I understand that the uh folks who are in opposition today are classified as uh non-interested. As you mentioned, that they could cross-examine, and I know that's one of the
So.
being interested.
So we're gonna, w- we're gonna determine whether or not they qualify as an interesting party or not. One of the interesting things about this case is since it's a continued case, it's a little bit different, I'm gonna give a little bit more leeway to the rules here, only because it is a continued matter um that uh, uh, the, the, the rules were different when it started, and uh.
We have absolutely no issue with that, I'm more concerned about information than maybe presented. From the other side, we haven't had a chance to review it, so we'll get there when we get there.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, great, okay, so again, my name is Nick Fatikas, I'm one of the attorneys from the law offices of Sam Banks at two twenty-one North Los Angeles Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant S and S Mini Mark Incorporated. The applicant intends to lease the subject property of twelve seven oh one South Pulse Street. The applicant is proposing to convert the site uh from a uh mechanic shop to a gas station with an accessory retail convenience store. The uh special use is required in this case because the subject property is located in a C two dash one motor vehicle-related commercial zoning district, and a special use is required for the gas station use. Additionally, we're seeking a companion variation because the subject property's uh lottery total equals thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-four square feet. Uh, that's an existing lot condition specific to the subject property, and as you can see from the photo previously, uh, we've ordered an improved property that we don't own, so we're bound by the current uh uh lot dimensions. We have uh three witnesses available to testify today. I mean, have the applicant's corporate secretary, Mr. Ali Musa, our project architect, Damian Babbits, and our M A I. Appraiser, Mr. Terrence O'Brien. And Chairman, again, before I, uh, I open the witnesses up to questioning, I'd like to address a little bit of the zoning history specific to this property. As you saw from our findings of facts submittal, an individual applicant was actually before the zoning board back in January of twenty-twenty-one, under calendar numbers four hundred twenty-one S and four oh one twenty-one Z. Uh, the relief request were identical, a special use for the gas station use, and a variation to reduce the corresponding lot area total. Ultimately, the board approved those applications, but it imposed conditions on that approval. Specifically on page ten of the written resolution from those cases, um, that the three conditions were that the approvals ran specifically to that applicant, that the development be consistent with the plan set, and most importantly, that the hours of operation were limited to from six A M. In the morning until ten P M. At night. Reading the findings of fact from that case, that was a uh consideration that the board thought was appropriate based on some of the concerns raised by neighbors. Ultimately, the applicant, individual applicant in that case, who was not represented by my office, made the business decision to move forward, uh, not move forward with the project. The property was sold, and the S and S Mini Mark Group came in to establish the gas station consistent with those rules, so I wanna be very clear from the start. We understand that there are community objections and community concerns about the operation of the gas station. Should the board approve us today, we would ask or agree to the same condition that the hours be limited from six A M. In the morning until ten P M. Next. That was really the controlling issue in twenty, in January of twenty-twenty-two. And with the, to respect to the plan set, the, the general build-out is almost identical, however, we have made, we, we believe are some improvements to the site plan, addressing pedestrian uh access, the location of the vehicle driveways, um, so we think we've improved upon a plan that was already held to meet standard, or to meet the variation in special use standards. Um, so again, while we absolutely understand there are concerns uh from some of the neighbors in the alderman's office, uh, we're asking the board to consider the same special use and the same conditions under a new app. That's really, we're stepping into the shoes of the prior. Um, and with that, again, I can make my witnesses available for questions, or?
Uh, why don't you uh introduce all of your witnesses by name, and then um I will uh ask them the question that I ask about the
Right.
information being submitted.
So uh, Ali Musa is our corporate secretary of S and S Mini Mark Incorporated. Damian Babbits, B A B I C, I'm sorry, is our project architect. And Terrence O'Brien is our M A I. Designated Appraiser.
And the board recognizes Mr. O'Brien's expertise. Um, for the applicant's witnesses, uh, do all of you affirm that the application materials submitted for this matter are still true and correct?
Yes.
Okay. You have to say yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, 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 thank you, and those materials will be submitted uh into the record. Um, are there any questions for the applicant's witnesses uh from the board before we go to the opposition? Okay, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna go to the uh, to the opposition, and um. Oh, Anthony Beal, um, you know, I, I saw that you were here, uh, you wanna speak at the end, you wanna speak uh now? Okay, yeah, all right, here, please. Do you just uh state your name and role for the record?
Anthony Beal, Alderman of the Knight Ward.
Okay.
All right. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Um, and I would like, thank you all for this opportunity to talk about uh the gas station, I want to thank my residents for coming down. Uh, we had a lot more residents that were targeted to come down, however, uh, since we've got a couple of continuances uh, and moving things around, my residents may not continue to just take all. and moving things around, my residents may not continue to just take off, you know, maneuver around, um, all these different continuances, so I told them that I will see here, um, avoid competition for this gas station. There were a couple of meetings that were scheduled in the community that the applicant, uh, did not attend. I think there were a total of two, maybe three, um, community meetings that were scheduled that were on the books, and they didn't show up. And, um, you know, I asked that person at, in two of those meetings. And basically, we do, first of all, we do not need another gas station in the community. Uh, when you look at the gas stations that we already have, I think there's about twelve gas stations within a two mile radius, there's about twelve gas stations already. Um, we know that, uh, in certain communities such as ours, gas stations are, they play for fine, drug trafficking, uh, loud music, drive-by, or whatever else you may wanna throw into that equation. So, this is a very quiet, close-knit community that is, um, you know, they just want their peace and quality of their neighborhood intact. And by adding this gas station, you wanna uplift all of their peace and tranquility that they currently, uh, enjoy right now. I have one of the oldest communities in the nation, in the nation, uh, because a lot of my residents, when they buy in the Ninth Ward, they live there and they die there, because they're comfortable about where our community is, and we wanna keep it that way. I've represented the Ninth Ward for almost over twenty-five years, almost twenty-six years now, and I can tell you without question, I know what's best for my community. Uh, we built a lot of jobs and opportunity in the area, and this is not something that we need. Um, you know, unfortunately, um, the prior Alderman in the thirty-fourth ward, this is in, in an area that I acquired with the remap, and the Alderman had approved before she left, there was about two, maybe even three more gas stations that were on the books, and I've been trying to get ahead and stop all these gas stations, because we just don't need them. Okay, and so, I'm hoping that this board sees fit to deny this application. I think the department is in favor of denying this application, our community is in favor of denying this application. The only, only person that's in favor of it is the person that wants to come in, take money from our community, and leave the community, because those dollars do not stay in our community. And so, they don't employ people from the community, they all wanna say that they do, they all wanna say that we wanna be a good partner, but at the end of the day, we've seen this song and dance one too many times. They open up, and they take the money, and they bleed the money out of our community, so hopefully you all see fit to deny this application.
Those, uh, community meetings that you, uh, referenced, was the, uh, wha- what was the, the attendance for those community meetings?
Uh, Tracy, this is my chief of staff, Tracy Murray.
Oh, great. We have a sign-in sheet for the last one that was scheduled October twenty-sixth, you may not have missed it. It was scheduled for October twenty-sixth, and, um, they were aware, and I think that maybe four PM the day before, they tried to reach out to some of the residents to do a Zoom meeting, but all the resident was not aware of the Zoom meeting, so some attended and some of them just didn't come, but they was, we were not able to transfer that into a Zoom meeting. Within less than twenty-four hours of a notice.
And, um, the, the, so these were, th- this was a meeting in these, in, in the people who attended this meeting were in opposition to this matter?
Some of them were, did find out that they were not gonna be in attendance, so they didn't come, but all of the residents was not able to find out that information, so they attended. So, it's those.
Okay, uh, anybody else have any questions for the Alderman? Okay, uh, thank you for your, uh, your, your input on this matter, uh, we're gonna also hear from, uh, the opposition from the, the, the community. Uh, who would like to go first? Sure, um, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
I reside in one twenty-seven seventeen South Emerald Chicago, six zero six.
Are you, uh, an owner of that property? Okay, um, alright, tell us, uh, your, uh, your opposition to this matter.
Um, so, we do not, as stated so very well by Alderman, thank you, um, there is an oversaturation of gas stations within a community. We ourselves know that gas stations are prone to different violent crimes, we are also a high-traffic, um, motor vehicle accident community. On a regular basis, there are many accidents that are already occurring there. We have four nearby daycares, one of which being on my block, which is the block over from where the proposed gas station would be, as well as a, an elementary school that is only one block down. So additional traffic coming in and out on top of the inner, uh, area where there's already several traffic incidents, seems like daily. This would be harmful to both the residents and especially the children, so that's a concern. We are concerned about the fact that, one, we are in a food desert, and personally, I have met Mr. Musa before, um, and stated our concerns to him directly in regards to what our concerns are and what would be helpful for our community, and that we were willing to work with him if he was willing to open up something that would be of benefit to the community. It seems that his proposal was still to come back with a gas station. The foods, items that are offered at a gas station are not anything that have, uh, substantial health benefits. It, there are things that are going to further play down the health of our community, where we already struggle with diabetes, obesity, high blood pressure. They are not fresh foods that are going to be offered there, it is more processed foods that continue to cause a problem with the health of the residents within the community. Uh, I also wanted to mention, um, in regards to the meeting that they spoke of with the community, um, I was supposed to be in attendance, unfortunately, I had a death in the family, I had to travel, and I did miss the email in regards to switching that to a virtual link, but that is a meeting in which the owners and attorneys for the gas station asked to have with the community, and not one of them showed, from my understanding. So, you're asking to put a gas station within a community, where you're not even willing to come out and meet with the community? It was a bit disrespectful to many of the community members to ask for a virtual link, and you wanna set up a physical business. So, environmental concerns are an issue, we are concerned about idling vehicles, um, added on to air pollution, the underground storage tanks, they could have any, if they have any type of leaks or any issues there, that's polluting our water. And most of all, like was mentioned prior to, violence. It's known that people hang around gas stations, and there are violent things that occur with that. Um, the proposal from the last owner of the company to be able to open from six to ten, we were never in agreement with that, not the community. We've never been in agreement with the gas station, we've actually protested about that gas station, we've had community activists out. Well, it was under the other owner, we did not, under no circumstances, want a gas station.
Thank you, uh, did you have any questions for any of the applicant's witnesses?
No.
Okay, uh, sir, uh, could you state your name and address, please?
Mitchell Connor, one twenty-seven seventeen South Emerald.
Okay, and are you also, uh, an owner of that property?
Yes.
Okay.
This one, uh, this one, you know, what benefit from the applicants, do you see that will give our neighborhood?
It's asked globally, so right now you have a vacant building that has very little productivity. Being able to provide the new gas station, build out a new gas station, provide new landscaping, new lighting, new sideways pedestrian elements, to be able to provide jobs in the community, to be able to provide sales and tax revenue generated in the community, are all generally benefits of having a redevelopment project or adaptive reuse project, specific to the subject property.
Uh, you can ask the other question.
Uh, how many gas stations do you currently own?
Me, I own five.
How many African-Americans do you have working for you?
Like, three.
Three out of five gas stations?
Yeah.
How many total employees?
Well, like, maybe ten, twelve, something like that.
Are they cash, cashiers, are they behind the glass, or are they just cleaning up?
No, bo- both, you know?
Both, huh?
Yeah.
More, more cleaning up than behind you?
No, we're working the cashier.
Mr. Counter, did you have any other questions?
I guess, I think the benefit as far as the lighting and the, um, implementation of, of, uh, of a, of a, a new building in that, but as far as into what do the community, you know, want to kind of receive?
There's, I, I don't know how, we're, we're not paying anybody in the community, I don't, I don't know how to answer that. The community is gonna have a property that's currently zoned C-two it, at an intersection, at a commercial intersection with an activist. That's, we think generally speaking, that's a very, there's no additional, um, I will call it, a, a contribution, neighborly contribution, we wanna be able to be a good neighbor, but we're not, we, we can't pay to play, so we're gonna operate our store, we're gonna and spend upwards of, uh, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to deliver a new station, again, with all the features shown on the plan, and, and that's what we think is part of the benefit, we're doing that on our own, we're not asking for money from the city, we're not asking for any type of contribution from the ward office, this is a, a private project intended to improve the property.
So it's private, uh, money going to it, so it, so the benefit would benefit the private uh, investors, correct?
It would, but it also benefits the community at large, because comparing a vacant property or an unused property?
It's business there.
I understand, an unused property, a property that is not gonna remain a motor vehicle repair facility forever, that's, they own the property. So, it's, 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 I guess what I'm trying to say is, yes, I think that, uh, an, a, a new project with new development, with all of the bells and whistles that we're talking about, with the limited hours of operation, will serve as a benefit upon what's there today, and what else could go there in a C-two district?
What else could go there would be gang bangers, hoodlums, all the negative things that we said that comes with this type of business. And, and by you having five businesses, I'm, I'm sure you have had several incidents at them businesses, that moreover prove that what we're talking about is true.
I'm sure, Chairman objection, there's no, there's no, uh, crime statistic, there's no document, there's nothing to rely on, that gas stations are
Never seen a good a gas station, money, two miles away, that year, or this year, I'm sorry.
I don't have any record, I, I don't know how to respond to that. Uh, two, well, let's go back, couple of the gas stations, I think it's five of the gas stations that were cited in the department's letter are not in Chicago properly. They're actually along I fifty-seven, in a, in a, outside of the boundaries of the city of Chicago. Uh, uh, we're kinda speculating here as to which gas stations have problems, which ones are bad. And we have a plan to limit our hours, we have a plan to have lighting, have an active business during the limited hours of operation that would specifically respond to and address issues of crime. Right now, I, I don't know, I guess crime could happen at a mechanic shop as easy as it could at a gas station. I, I, I don't know how to respond to that, frankly.
I pass. Okay, uh, could you first, um, state your name and address for the record, please?
Peggy Pointer, one twenty-eight nineteen South Union.
Okay, and do you own the property there?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, go ahead and, uh, and, and tell us why you're here in opposition.
Okay, um, I've been living in my home for fifty years, and I'm one of the people that Alderman Bill, uh, looked into, that once we move in a home and we like the environment we need, then we stay there. So, I'm very opposed to having a service station in my community. I enjoy the freedom of walking around my community, not being afraid of someone hijacking me, I mean, robbing me, or you know, I just feel more safe, and I believe if we would allow a service station to come into our community, we will experience a lot of, um, safe things.
Thank you. Um, did you, did you need to, wanna say anything more?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, uh, again, uh, your name, I roll to the right.
It's Tracy, Tracy Murray, I'm Alderman Bill's chief of staff, and I'm a former resident of West Foreman, my mom still lives there at five forty-seventh West one hundred and twenty-first Place. And they're absolutely right about the schools, maybe not even three years ago, a security guard was recently hit over in that area, and you all are just not familiar with the area, there was a shooting at BP, which is a half a mile down the street, and the one you're speaking of that's not in Chicago, it's on one hundred and twenty-third and Halsted, so your gas station's gonna, the one you want is on one hundred and twenty-seven Halsted, if you go up to one hundred and twenty-third and Halsted, on west side of the street is Canyon Park, on the other side of the street is Chicago. So that gas station have major issues, residents don't even go to that, that gas station, and you're talking about being good neighbors, and saying how we just need this gas station, we have two gas stations, not even a half a mile to go to, that have all type of violence and different crimes that take place, and that, that particular corner, with the, well, with the auto mechanic, it's a black iron gate, in the future, new development could come. The neighborhood is growing, there's a lot of new development, it's not like we have a, don't get your gas station, nothing would ever happen there. But another gas station, you can go any direction and go a half a mile and get your gas station, so we just don't need another gas station.
Chairman, right, I'm not wrong, so, yeah, ask a question, a question.
Sure.
The gas stations that you're talking about that has the problem, the, the problematic gas station down the street, is that a twenty-four hour gas station?
I don't think none of those are, I'm not sure if they are, I don't go to
And, you know, do they have, do they have security guards or any other protective measures in place?
I don't know, what, he's planning on having a security guard?
It's something we're gonna, we're gonna get to, yeah, yes.
I don't know if they have security guards, you know, I'm going in daytime, and I just don't think there's another gas station needed to add to the twelve gas stations we have.
Okay, uh, would you like to go next?
I can.
Okay.
My name's Joyce Harvey, I'm at one twenty-seven fifty-four South Union.
Okay.
Yes, I do own the home.
Okay.
Basically, in reference to the crime, unfortunately, our community is set at the border of Canyonet Park, Blue Island, and Riverdale. So, yes, there are twelve gas stations within that immediate area, yes, they are outside of Chicago, but we two do currently have three that's in our immediate area. Unfortunately, we don't want this gas station. And in reference to him and the five other gas stations, can I ask where are they located?
Hundred fifteen, hundred fifteen Holst.
Hundred fifteen.
Sir, you could just, um, keep your, yeah, keep your voice up.
Hundred fifteen Holst.
Which one? You got one of those?
The BB, no, the Citco B four, this BB.
It's the BP?
Yes. Yes, I have one, uh, Washington and Pulaski. Sixty-third by the Express, sixty-third, uh,
She said sixty-third?
Yeah, sixty-third, yeah, by the ninety.
Okay.
And, uh, one sixty-seven Giffey.
Sixty-seven to Jeffrey?
Yes.
So?
One, uh, ninety, ninety-fifth and Skanaba.
No.
Skanaba.
So, with that being said, the five gas stations that you currently own, have there been any criminal activities reported to the police in that, in those districts?
No.
Let me just identify, we did, um, I have put in a request in order for the twelve gas stations that's within our immediate area to find out the criminal activities, and I'm waiting for the police departments of those areas to give me that information.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is, is, is there anyone else that, uh, came, signed up to, uh, to speak in opposition? Okay?
I'm allowed. Anyone else? No, I just.
Well, my name is Deborah Green, I live at sixty-eleven West one hundred and twenty-ninth Place. My husband and I own the home there, and they're in there for fifteen years. Um, I just, there really is absolutely no need for an additional gas station there, there actually is an empty gas station on one hundred and twenty first and Halsted, I mean, to put additional, uh, resources, I mean, I'm not quite sure if you looked at that place when you were thinking of putting a gas station in, but, um, it, that area, every, at least weekly, there is that bad accident right there, right at that But um it, that area, every, at least weekly, there is that bad accident right there, right at that intersection. And to put another thing there, when it already is very. There's a lot of issues at that particular intersection. You know, and I just don't see the need for it. Um there's a daycare, you know, right on that same block. I just, frankly, just don't see a need for it. Uh you, of course, everybody's worried about crime. Uh I'm worried about the fact that this is all getting very close to the Cal State River, all these, you know, chemicals and different things like that. I'm definitely in opposition.
I apologize, Debra. Debra, can you say your last name again? I'm sorry.
It's Threat, T H R E A T T.
Thank you, uh sir.
Yeah, I want to leave Debra's argument and uh it's not on what she's saying. I'm a very avid outdoorsman. We're right on the river. I have a boat there that'll go up and down, I fish the river. We fish trash out of the river quite frequently behind our home while we're out boating. Uh and I sound very avid about the uh the environment. And anything that potentially, potentially can harm that environment is uh. Is uh disappointing, disappointing to me. Uh we we frequently walk the area, pick up trash and uh we're definitely opposed to. Even that plant that was across the street that uh go on the side of the portion there. We were discouraged and kind of fought against that. So.
Thank you, sir.
Could you say his arm and move and I reside at one two seven oh five South Emerald Avenue, which is one block or maybe one half block.
Could you say your name one more time?
Arnold.
Arnold.
Moten. Yes.
That's M O T E N.
Yes.
Okay, and you own the uh the property on Emerald?
I own my wife, yes.
Thank you.
Um I think there has been some real strong uh ideals in opposition. Of this gas station. Uh at that intersection, right at that property. I have experienced on several different occasions. Accidents that have shaken and waking me out of my bed, run to the door and see what happened. I have witnessed several different accidents. Well, I won't say several, maybe four. On that intersection right there. There's a. There's a saturation of crime surrounding my area. Around my block. You know, I feel fortunate to live on a block that I'm on. We're a quiet, close knit uh neighborly community. Directly right there. And I know, I feel strongly that if a gas station is placed here. We would be put in unease about being residents there. After something like that. Now, I don't have any questions for the potential owners of this gas station or the applicants, rather. Uh. Uh and I don't uh have anything negative to see about. Opening up a business, but in our community. That type of business is not something that benefits our community. And this is why we're all here today. This is why we're all here because we are concerned residents of this community. We're trying to save this community. We don't need any potential additional harms. That comes with a new business into our community. Around the West Pullman area. I know we all listen to news and quite often we hear the stories that surrounds us each and every, almost each and every day. In our neighborhood. And that's not something positive. That we can really accept coming into our comm- community. What we need are grocery stores. That's what we need. You know, uh there's a property over there on one hundred and twenty seven and or uh Vermont and Ashman. That was shut down years ago and it hasn't reopened yet. With the dire need that we have for grocery store. We need to potentially address. The needs of our community and not the distractions that come with something that we don't do. So with all due respect to the potential. Uh applicants or the applicants of this business, uh I'm in opposition.
Thank you, sir. Um alright, at this point, we are going to go back to the applicant for rebuttal.
Okay, okay, so the the first part, um I I and actually chairman, do I have an opportunity to question? The department regarding its.
Yes, 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 you can. Oh, 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 did you uh? Let's maybe before.
I could do, I could respond to one other point if you need time.
Would, uh hold on, um Nancy, did you wanna, did you wanna speak in in opposition to this matter?
I am.
Okay, alright, before we get to your rebuttal closing, let's let D P D speak. We do know that we've we've got their letter. The letter is entered into the record. Um it is recommending denial. Uh Nancy Ranzovich from the Department of Plant and Development. Um go ahead and tell us why D P D is is in objection here.
Um the department, it was development and what we did is um in fact, we took a closer look. As Alderman Bill had mentioned.
Hey, maybe shut the door.
And I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I thought we were enjoying this.
No, that's hey.
Um. When this originally through in twenty twenty one, um the board Alderman, at time. Alderman Austin had been hundred percent supportive. That was was the. That I saw from the transcript. Um understanding that when this application came back in, Alderman Bill, we spoke with Alderman, understanding that. He was in opposition and that his community had strong deposition. We took a closer look. Um our recommendation for denial is is really based on a couple factors. Um first, we look at the context of this area. It is primarily a single family and low density um residential area. That has a a strip of equal low intensity, low density. Commercial development, particularly this stretch of homes that. You've got a cemetery at the north west corner. And then you've got, based on our analysis. Um you've got basically a mix of hair salons. Um you've got a couple of um a general store. You've got a retail tire store that even though that's auto one, auto oriented, it's a low intensity. There's only people that really hires or makeovers, not very frequently. Um there's a a couple daycare centers, a couple churches. The the whole character of this, this, I shouldn't, I'm talking about this kind of two block area. Along Halsted immediately surrounded site is really low intensity. Um and not really vehicle oriented and not regionally oriented like a gas station is. Um in addition, what we also love to have is um so so twofold, it's it's. It's not in character with the existing business makeup. But it's also something that's gonna bring um higher intensities, auto, like this and and potentially. Stuffing from outside and maybe a piece that happen. But again, it's added character with this area, so it's it's, I mean, it's um not consistent with. In terms of operating characteristics related to traffic. The third thing that we have to look at is um is. We've looked at many and we have heard, again, mentioned by the Alderman, there's so many gas stations and he he referenced that. So we did a little bit more research and what we found is that there are. Already four gas stations within one mile. And a total of sixteen within a mile and a half, the subject property. What we also did is we looked at where some of these gas stations are located. And some of them are actually located in areas that much more appropriate for gas stations. For example, right near one hundred and twenty seventh, we have the entrance to the next end with the highway with her, so. Um for those reasons. The department believes that this is not meeting all of the standards. It's it's failing to meet those standards that we referenced in our our recommendation memo. Um and we are recommending denial because this is, you know, it it will have an adverse impact. It will adversely change the community. And it's just not in character with the existing makeup of the community or this residential low intensity um nature of the similarity.
Thank you.
Of course.
Um okay, now we will go to uh the applicant for rebuttal and closing.
Okay, so I'm gonna try and structure this. Uh first speak uh question to Srazovic and then I'll respond generally more of a closing summation if that's alright.
Sure.
Um Nancy, again, you're aware that a prior applicant did obtain special use and variation approvals from the board in January of twenty two, right?
Yes.
And at that time, you actually testified in that hearing, is that right?
Yes.
And uh at that time, the department actually recommended approval subject to conditions for the proposed gas station and convenience store, is that right?
Yes.
And presumably that recommendation was based on your review of not only the proposed use of the plants, but the underlying zoning and the special use approval criteria, is that right?
Um with the application of criteria, yes.
Okay, and since January of twenty two, are you aware of any specific changes to the zoning districts in the immediate area?
Uh the zoning districts themselves or the land uses or?
The zoning districts?
No.
And are you aware of any substantial changes in the land uses between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four?
Um I have greater knowledge of the land uses between a time and now.
Okay, and so there is, and with respect, so not, uh let me assess, you said you have greater knowledge.
I can't tell you.
Do you know if there's a change or is it, you just understand them a little bit better now?
I don't know if there's a change. What I can tell you is that. Having looked more closely, particularly at gas stations themselves in relation to the site. Because again, last time we were told Alderman's hundred percent supportive. This time we told, we're told that there's a lot of concerns, so it forced us to look at things more.
I understand that.
And I'm just explaining.
No, I appreciate that explanation.
Why um why a much more in law.
Generally speaking, my understanding is that the department's role in these cases is to provide an objective and access of the special use standards to the zoning board. And not necessarily relay the Alderman's position. Would you say that's fair?
And we don't relay the Alderman's position.
Nancy, with all due respect, you just said that when the Alderman was for it in twenty twenty two, you recommended approval. And then you quote, took a closer look this time and you took that, why did you take that closer look?
Uh you're misinterpreting or for miss uh. Misrepresenting what I was trying to say, so let me try to explain it more clearly.
Well, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm actually.
So I have the ability to clarify that. Right?
Yes, let let her answer the question.
When we are told from Alderman that they are one hundred percent supportive, that was the quote. You're one hundred percent supportive, we're really excited about this, we get positive feedback from an Alderman. What we do is we look at the the application, we do our analysis. But we do not necessarily go that that further step. Because no concerns have been raised at the time that our report. That's what I'm saying. The automatic input is so important to us. Because the Alderman knows the community so much better than we do. So when an Alderman tells us they are one hundred percent supportive. We are not gonna go and start digging for issues unless we've been notified that there are issues out there. In this case, we were notified that there are issues and concerns out there. Which prompts us then to do that deeper look and to look more closely and to expand the consideration. And when we specifically have an Alderman saying to us. Our community is saying we have too many gas stations in this area. Like we need to take a closer look and figure out how many gas stations are in this area. So there is a lot more analysis that would be done when you know that there is heavy community opposition. Particularly when the Alderman, again, knows their community better, starts bullying some of the things we might not be aware of. We cannot physically get out to every site.
Okay, so probably one thing we can agree on though is that. The zoning and the makeup of the immediate area hasn't changed significantly since twenty twenty two, right?
We can agree on is the zoning has not. What I said was, because the previous Alderman was supportive. We didn't necessarily take as an expansive look, so I can't, I can't testify to the makeup.
Okay, um with respect to the current application, the department is saying that the proposed gas that gas station would have an adverse impact. And it were were later, I'm sorry, uh called the use of regional vehicle oriented business. Is the term regional vehicle oriented business defined by the Chicago zoning ordinance?
It is.
And regardless of kind of the nomenclature there, the current uh recommendation obviously contradicts the position in twenty twenty two, right? For the same regional vehicle oriented business at the same property, right?
Well, no, that's not necessarily the case because this is a new applicant as well. And special uses are given a one year timeline specifically because everything context can change, a lot of things can change.
And so I think we're getting back to my point without having.
The same.
Exactly, so with without, without having done the in-depth search that you could have done in twenty twenty two. You have no way to say what's changed or different between twenty two and twenty four.
Um what I can't say is that it's the same proposal that was. What I thought was.
But you couldn't, you also can't say that it's changed because you don't necessarily know. What the starting point was in twenty twenty two based on the limited scope of review that you completed. Okay, um now the recommendation goes on to describe community focused retail along South Halsted Street. Is the term community focused retail defined anywhere in the works?
You just know.
Okay, um but you did identify personal service, quick service restaurants, general of general businesses. And uh even religious assembly uses all in the immediate area.
Yes.
And we've heard that there's at least two other gas stations on South Halsted Street, right?
Yes.
Those weren't identified in the neighboring or in the neighboring landers, so. Right, you just look at your letter, it doesn't say that there are gas stations.
When we analyzed the uh uses in our memo. But we looked contextually is within that immediate two block area.
Okay, and so did you, in that same two block area, did you identify any other vehicle related uses?
There was a tire store which needs to be detailed use. And even though it is selling automobile products. Tire stores tend to be what we call a destination focused kind of retail. Where somebody is specifically complaining, possibly needing tires. It does not, it is not a high traffic generator. The other use oriented, auto oriented use, other than subject company, um is a auto repair shop. And again, it's like a neighborhood auto repair. It's not a um, it's not a brand name, it's not like a. Chippewa or something like that, it's a neighborhood.
So you're saying people who don't live in the neighborhood don't?
I I don't necessarily know for sure, um but when we see those types of. What we would think all, you know, generally a mom and pop, you know, no, not a brand name. Um business typically, typically, um those tend not to be high volume, they tend to be more generally, but I can't.
And those those two businesses, the tire shop and the uh auto repair, those both border residential zoning districts. Um either the east or west, to the east or west, right? So they're in a business or.
I, they don't have those so many now.
There's. Is it not listed on the screen?
Um. I don't remember those businesses. Uh, yeah, I would say it's just businesses which we analyze our lot also than, and yeah, they.
Big border or residential, okay, great, um, now, one of the things, um. Those uses as well as the other uses that are are located up and down um South Halsted Street, you what is it? Is there a defined purpose in the code for for zoning districts?
Um, each zoning district has a general description.
Right, and so the subject property C two, is that right? It is. Okay, and I think it's important, um, do you believe that a gas station fits the intent of this particular district?
Um, I cannot answer that question generally, gas stations are special uses. And special uses are specifically those types of uses that may be appropriate in a particular zoning district. But each special use is evaluated on a case by case basis. And each individual site based on operating characteristics, search of the neighborhood, and the special use criteria.
And before we get to even being eligible for special use, we have to have the proper base zoning, right?
Yes.
And is it fair to say that the C two zoning district in particular represents the highest intensity business or commercial zoning district in the code? You can go to section seventeen three oh one oh six eight.
Yeah, I know where it is, I just.
Chairman, would it just save time if I read that section? I I do wanna make it a part of the record, I could just read it aloud.
There is a C three that is branded.
Okay, so just based on that, I'd like to read that code section into the codes or into the records so that the board understands the rationale behind the C two zoning district. The primary purpose of the C two motor vehicle related commercial district is to accommodate a very broad range of businesses, services, and commercial uses. In terms of allowed uses, C two represents the highest intensity business or commercial zoning district. It allows nearly any type of business, service, or commercial use, including those involving outdoor operations and storage. Like the B three district, and I would interrupt myself, that our property is C two bordered by consistent E three zoning. The C two district in the C two district development will generally be destination oriented. And a very large percentage of customers will arrive by automobile. Nancy, the position that you've taken or that you've recommended that the board take. Would be in contradiction to the general intent of the C two zoning district, right?
It is not, because again, if gas stations were deemed appropriate. It everywhere within a C two district, they would not be a special use.
Nancy, you missed my point, the code itself reads that development will generally be destination oriented, which is a gas station, you you drive there. And a very large percentage of customers will arrive by automobile. And I don't know many people who try and get gas without their car, so we can, can we at least agree that the gas station use? Is consistent with the intent of the C two zoning district for the Chicago zoning ordinance. Thank you. Lastly, we talked about um traffic. You, in your analysis, did you rely on any traffic report or data to substantiate that there'd be a negative impact on traffic?
Um, we just rely on our past experience of knowing that gas stations. Tend to be the types of businesses that grow from a wider area versus. By the things that we consider, neighborhood retail stores like nail salons, hair salons. A smaller uh commercials bases that tend to be more what we call neighborhood focused. And you're right, a lot of these terms that I use are not within the zoning code. They are in common usage by urban and institutions.
Thank you very much. Um, Chairman, I wanna switch over to more of a, uh, we'll call it a rebuttal, a brief rebuttal. Um, there were comments made about the community meeting that didn't happen. I wanna, I I know there are new rules in place. We started our conversations months ago and tried to coordinate a meeting with the various parties. As most recently, actually, before the October zoning board date, I was in contact with Ms. Simmons. And she was extremely responsive, extremely polite, we were trying to to coordinate something. And one of the suggestions, and it's actually in the title block of the email exchange, is. Twenty seven oh one, twelve seven oh one through seven South Halsted, virtual community meeting. And the email, I'm not gonna read the whole email chain. The the gist was, we wanted to have options, because we were trying to do it on a Saturday, we knew not everybody could fit it into their schedules. We knew that people from the community may not wanna go to the meeting, they may just wanna listen to it on the phone or on their computer. It's part of the email exchange that we were gonna have options. It, I I'll take blame for the miscommunication, we we thought we had an option to do a virtual meeting based on the email exchange. I emailed, there was a family emergency, things happened, I get it. I understood, we didn't have a community, a a link to that community meeting, and she was unavailable to answer. And that's her right, and I'm not criticizing her in the least bit, again, things happen in people's lives. I sent an email though, even uh October thirtieth after the meeting, and said, we can meet in person. I thought we suggested a virtual option to increase participation, I apologize if there was confusion, either way. We'll follow your lead on rescheduling the meeting before the November date. And we did not get a response, but I, if it's worth anything to the board, I'd like to at least offer at least to show that there was some effort to try and make a meeting happen. Unfortunately, it did not happen.
May I have a small?
Well, set this into the record. Um, but uh.
I can go to my clothes.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, uh, I have a couple of questions.
But um, yeah, you, okay, you give.
I have a couple of quick questions, I'll I'll make it very brief. Um, Ali, again, we we've already testified, or we've already um provided the board with witness statements. But I wanna be very clear for the board, if the board were to approve our special use and variation applications. You would obey the six AM to ten PM hour limitation, is that right?
Yes.
You also suggested in response to community concerns about crime. That you would have a security guard onsite from three PM until ten PM at the end of the shift.
Yes.
And we would make that a condition if the boards willing to consider it, to help alleviate concerns to actually have a security professional onsite. During the afternoon and early evening hours, again, knowing that the business is gonna close at ten PM. Uh, thank you, uh Damian, very quickly, you were the architect in twenty twenty two, is that right? And since twenty twenty two, and as part of this application, you made additional improvements to the plans, is that right?
Correct.
In some, we relocated the driveway further away from the intersection, correct? And we also provided additional pedestrian and landscape areas for access separate from the vehicle areas, right?
Uh, correct, we had three driveways, two off of Halsted and one off of one twenty seven. Uh, we reduced it to just one on the Halsted and one on twenty seven there, a little bit further away from the intersection.
So while we absolutely understand that this is a new application, the prior approved application had three driveways, we've reduced it to two, correct? Okay, um, that that's it right, and uh Terry, you um. Again, you've done an analysis, uh, an assessment of the area as well.
I have.
And you provided a written report summarizing your findings and conclusions.
That is correct.
And it's your professional opinion that a gas station would be an appropriate and compatible use at the subject property, is that right?
I have reasons for that if you want to.
I would love to hear those.
First of all, a gas station will only be located on a main thoroughfare. Uh, I believe the former witness was talking about the area in general. And that people will be traveling through that area to go to the gas station, in its residential nature. The people who will be traveling to the gas station from residential areas are those who reside there. It's not people from outside the area, it's people from within the area which are going to use that gas station. The other people who are gonna use that gas station are the ones who travel up and down Halsted Street. They're not gonna come from Ashland or Western to come over to use this gas station. Also, there was some testimony pertaining to uh two gas stations, I believe, at Southeast corner of one hundred and twenty third. And Halsted, one's a mobile and one's a Citgo, and it was a question, I think, to Ms. Tracy. About whether the hours of operation, those two gas stations are twenty four hours a day. And they are located approximately four blocks south of the subject, or north, excuse me. One other thing I wanna bring up, and it was covered extensively by Mr. uh. Patikas, but under the C two zoning classification, there are other options that this property could be put to. And this, the city and the planners believe is compatible with the surrounding area. Some of those uses include building materials sales, contractor, construction, storage yards. Supposedly, they're compatible with the surrounding properties, others would be restaurants, taverns. Banquet halls or meeting halls, retail sales, motor vehicle sales, heavy equipment sales and rentals, car washes. Vehicle repair shops, including bodywork, RV and boat storage, these are all compatible, because they're located. In this area, and they have zoned this area C two dash one. So those are the factors, and I also address the various criteria that are in the ordinance pertaining to special uses and variations. I believe that this proposed use fulfills all those criteria from a special use standpoint and also from a variation standpoint.
Chairman, with that, I'm going to conclude. Um, I, the way we've, the testimony that's come out today is it could basically cite three reasons or three concerns. Uh, with this application, the first is it suggests, at least in the department's letter, some of the comments from the neighbors. Is that there would be an adverse impact, because the gas station and retail convenience store would not be compatible with community focused retail uses. In the area, again, respectfully disagree that a three pump gas station, three pumping islands, six total positions. And a retail store would not be a community focused retail use, just like Mr. O'Brien testified. More importantly, the department's reasoning is inconsistent with established Illinois case law. In Chicago Heights fee, Living World Outreach, the Illinois Supreme Court held that special uses are considered compatible with the other uses in the zoning district. And that a special use may not be denied on the grounds that it is not in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. It actually went on to say that the appropriate standard to be used in determining whether a special use would have an adverse impact and should be denied. Is whether the facts and circumstances show that the particular use at a particular location would have an adverse effect above and beyond. Those inherently associated with uh special use irrespective of its location within that zone. Second, and I I I'm gonna hand in some case law at the end, just let me just get through it for consistency. Um, second, the uh neighbors and the department site traffic generation. No other information or data was provided to support that position. We also challenge that conclusion, and it's consistent with the Illinois Supreme Court's holding in Columbus Park congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses versus the zoning board. Uh, which held its speculative fears of traffic congestion, there are no reasonable relations in the general health, safety, or welfare. In fact, the Illinois Supreme Court went as far to say that while traffic generation is certainly a factor. It is not in self itself entitled too much weight, um, since it is a problem in all but the most sheltered neighborhoods. And it's constantly getting worse, that language again comes from LaSalle National Bank, the Scopi. Lastly, the department suggests that the uh gas station or recent retail store. Are not in the public convenience, because there are several other gas stations serving the area. Of course, we disagree with that position, uh, and believe that a three pump gas station or retail store in a commercial, at a commercial intersection. In a C two zoning district, and let's not forget, that same property previously supported a gas station. Would provide, that is certainly is going to provide a public convenience, right now. Again, many of the residents in the immediate area may have to travel outside city limits to I fifty seven. To to obtain gas or retail store items that we would be able to provide right in the neighborhood. I'd ask the board um to consider, lastly, that need in the context of zoning is not an absolute need. Illinois courts have construed need to mean expedient or reasonably convenient to the public welfare. That language comes from Illinois Bell Telephone Company v. Fox, another Illinois Supreme Court decision. For these reasons, our testimony, as well as the case law on the points that were raised as concerns by the objectors and by the department. We believe we've met or exceeded the special use and variation standards, and we'd ask the board to approve uh the applications. And I do have copies of each of those cases for the board to review, I'll take the cases.
Um. I have a question. On the issue of the the oversaturation, if I if I heard correctly, I think one of the arguments being made is that there are about twelve. Uh, gas stations within a one and a half mile radius, it's sixteen, sixteen, okay, sixteen. Gas stations within uh a one and a half mile radius, which I took as an objection that it's not in the public convenience. Because there's just so many of these in this area, and what is the response to that?
The response to that is that they're not all congregated at one point, they are spreading. There are, there is a congregation along I fifty seven at a hundred and twenty seventh, but again, that's outside city limits. That's not in Chicago.
He's not familiar with the area.
I'm looking at the zoning.
It is in Chicago. It's one, you got one on a hundred and fifty, take the house, twenty seven. And he own one on a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, Chairman, if we're gonna, I I I don't wanna waste time debating that, it's in the, it's in the resolution that the zoning board issued for the twenty twenty two case. Where it identified, it, that's where I got the information, it's from.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, so while there are others, not all of them are, again, it's not the fourth epic corner. It's the first one here, there's another one, as Terry said, to the north, there are others up and down Halsted, it's where they should be. That's exactly where they should be, it's a C two zone lot on a commercial thoroughfare, South Halsted, I mean, also, it's a pretty big street in Chicago. It goes north, it goes south, that's where gas station and similar services, similar uses go. If we were here putting in three blocks to the east, I, we wouldn't have wasted your time today. We're at a commercial intersection on a, at a commercially zoned property, seeking to reestablish a use that dates back to the nineteen seventies.
Any uh other questions uh from the board? Okay, seeing none, I wanna thank, uh, I'm sorry, no, we're we've we're at closing and rebuttal here, and then board questions. But um, we are uh going to take this matter under advisement, I wanna thank everyone, both the evidence witnesses, the opposition. The alderman for taking his time out of 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 what I can only imagine, it's a very busy time for you right now. So so thank you to everyone for coming, we're gonna take this matter under advisement. That's basically case, right? Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, we are, okay. Um. I move that we convene and to close the session pursuant to section two C four of the Open Muddings Act. For the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in the open session. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller, I vote yes for a closed session.
Thank you.
Ready, oh, ready, ready, okay. All right, I move, oh, uh, since we're in close session. Is that thing gonna go away? Okay, there we go, all right. All right, I move that we return to open session, Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back, we will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. First, I move to approve all continuance requests to the dates stated by me. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuance is approved. I move to approve all dismissals on the board's own motion, Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller, I vote yes, the dismissal is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers two seventy seven twenty four S and two seventy eight twenty four Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley. Two seventy seven twenty four S and two seventy eight twenty four Z.
I'm a no.
Uh, Commissioner Brooks.
No.
Commissioner Soto.
No.
Commissioner Schiller.
No.
I vote no, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar numbers three sixty eight twenty four Z and three sixty nine twenty four Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller, I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its October eighteen, twenty twenty four regular meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller, I vote yes, the written resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting, Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, we are adjourned, have a great weekend, everybody. I didn't, oh, sorry.